Yeah.
We'll call the meeting to order and begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Mottler.
Here.
Freelo.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
And let me just a second, I see that TZ is on the.
Oh, sorry.
Right, welcome, Dave. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
So.
It's a motion and a second to approve the agenda, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Move to approve the minutes.
All right, any visitors to be heard, Jim Peterson is here. From the Vermillion Chamber Development Company.
Good morning.
It's always awesome.
Okay.
That's it, I can go through it all.
Thank you.
Thanks, you can just leave one for Dave and he'll get up next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's Jim Peterson, Vermillion Area Chamber Development Company, I just wanted to give you an update where we are in that Vermillion Now Three campaign that you supported. We do about twice a year updates, so some of you have attended here from the commission, but I just thought I'd take about 10 minutes this morning maximum and go through it. If you recall, that campaign was back in nineteen, you can just follow along, there's handouts for you. We raised, it was a five-year campaign, that was a third campaign, we'll have another one coming up. Our goal was to raise 1.7 million, we raised a little over 2 million. Mostly the cash was 1.5 million. About eight percent was uncollected, we had the COVID years, some folks, you know, suspended things, some moved away, et cetera. If you have any questions when I go through this, please ask. So I'm now on that second page, you can see cash received today was 1.28 million, we have cash in the bank, about 287,000. Total spend about a million, the next page, I apologize, a little small, so get your readers out. But we put a lot in economic development, housing, we have and pay taxes on the National Music Museum Archive Building out by Polaris. I can get you a bigger sheet if you'd like, or I just wanted to give you an update and you can give feedback. So you can look through that, we do support you in the Pictionary. Say that right?
Pictionary, yeah.
Pictionary, my apologies. So if you go to the next page, which is where we had a goal to shift the commuters and that we had allocate the funds that you saw previously spent, so we wanted to shift that commuter ratio. We didn't make much headway on that, still about forty percent of the folks commuting into town, best we can tell from USD, Masaba Polaris and others. We did improve some of the downtown area, some of the other things. You go to page five, increased population, that's the bigger one, if you look at for USA Facts, the county increased 9.4% over the five-year period.
I do have one question, Jim, on the, on the ratio, is that just the commuter, are you counting everybody who doesn't live in the city?
Yes, that's what we're trying to do, live in this area and commutes in.
So even if they live three miles out, they're a commuter?
Yes, that was kind of the base, it's hard to define, so we wanted to make it more definitive going forward in the next campaign.
Okay. Good question.
As we, as we all, right, we need housing, we want them to live here, spend their money here, help that economic development or more, but yeah, good question. So we did increase population, you can read through that, we also have some upcoming sessions if you want to attend, but I know people are busy, so I thought I'd just give this brief recap. Next slide shows our strategic leadership, what we're trying to do, capital projects and community, expand our scope, it just shows how much money we've spent there, we're trying to collaborate more with the city, county, school district, university, et cetera. Go to that next page, seven, shows some of the more of the accomplishments we've done over the last five years. So a lot of money was spent on that Bliss Two infrastructure work, that's where we made fifty-four lots, and we're pleased to say as of today, sixty-seven percent have been sold. We have eighteen left. In Bliss One, started back in fourteen, there were seventy-four lots, we have one left to sell, and it's about a $23 million plus or minus tax value.
I'm missing seven and eight.
Seven or eight, seven?
Yeah, I've seen this.
Okay.
Apologize. If you look at grants, most recent, I think people aware, we received about 533,000 last year and a half on grants, ninety-seven to promote tourism, try to get people to come to town and spend money. The other one was in that childcare area, we had 36,000 for a study, then received 400,000 to allocate amongst child cares in Vermillion. So as of September, we should have increased about fifty-one slots in preschool and overall will increase seventy-four slots, which helps our workforce, people wanting to live here. We've had community meetings on housing, on childcare, and our finances to be very transparent. And then just other community engagement, working closer, culture association, what events we can bring to town, USD, AV Lounge, et cetera. Any question? Next slide, hopefully you have it, just different businesses that came to town or relocated. And that's not all inclusive, you can read that, like we know, Nutrien relocated, Masaba did one expansion with the gantry, now they're doing another expansion. And there's other businesses, we have the one restaurant, Mama Cita's, which will be opening end of August. You know, and then we've had other businesses go away, et cetera, so. Again, we just recap, housing is our big push, I think, you know, from economic development, so Bliss Point One. We do have that commercial lot, we're going to rezone it in two weeks to make it residential, hopefully that'll go through the city. Bliss Two, we're working on that, additional lots to sell, Jefferson Street may come back on the agenda, I know Dick's close to that one. And then multifamily housing, if we go back to our July, our 2022 housing study, we're short on my multifamily, but we're working on that. Currently, there's one nine-bed unit being built on Pine Street, Center Street has an eight-bed unit, and then Cottage, we're working with the developer investors on a forty-eight bed, it's been in process for a while. We still need many more. You look at, this is from the county, just how the tax dollars break down and get allocated. So about thirty-one percent go to the county of what we estimate or can bring in business or tax-based revenue, et cetera. So if we go on Bliss Point One, and down at the bottom we calculate it, that's going to come off the TIF about three years early, about next year or the following. So their share to the county will be about 154,000 in annual tax base, it's your allocation, I did it correctly, and I'll probably go up because of, you know, the assessed values are going up. Look Bliss Two, which we further out, that'll have a tax value of twenty million. The one that is in place now that we worked on Erickson Edition, which was Runnings, Casey's, O'Reilly's and National Music Museum Archive, which does have USD in there, that tax value in twenty-three was 108,000, so about thirty-four plus goes back to you. And then on some in the works, we have the, you know, Les Schwab Tire Company should start up in September, but that'll be a year delayed, and then they have their tax formula. Same thing with Dollar Tree, Masaba and a couple others, that'll be about 158 when that's fully through that tax cycle coming your way. So next page for the county now, where we are, working on, as you know, with some of your folks on the South, it's co-op, that AES still out there, haven't heard much from them. Then we have a commercial project, I can't disclose, that we're working on, a couple people know. Hopefully that'll come to fruition. Millionaire, we have about two businesses on expansions, we've worked with one in transition, hopefully we can keep it in town, probably about four real active, then we have a list of about twenty. And then just to give you an idea, so state of South Dakota gets leads, they would give them to us, we see if it's a fit for our community, we see what available land we have, buildings and work it through. We also work closely with Economic Development and the REED, which is the co-op on loans for people, so we've got placed three loans, local businesses, last year we're in the works for three more now to expand or refinance, get things going. Go to page thirteen, housing land. It's where we're work, we're working with our local builders, trying to get interest in the multifamily lots, it's the Jack Powell Edition, we've also brought in some upside developers, but at this time, they'd rather go elsewhere than here. So we have to look at incentives, as the other communities do, to entice builders, make things to come to Vermillion. So the VCDC, our board, has allowed us to do some incentives to entice people to come, hopefully it's our local builders, and then the city is talking to one developer also to come into town. I think we all know there's that land across from Ace, that project continues to move forward slowly, we have a meeting tomorrow on it with the developer in the city. Could be a TIF involved, so it takes a little longer time, that'll be a very good development, great for the tax base. Then the VCDC, similar to Bliss Point, where we acquired the land. Did a TIF, we're continuing to look for land going east or north eventually, that's where the growth would be, if we want to grow the community, which we do. And then we're working with the university, kind of on the corner of Plum and Fifty, with a developer and us, so we own land there, the university owns lands for like a master plan, what it looks like, which includes some housing. Going too fast, too slow?
No. Good.
Before the audience yet? Not the best picture, but that's the Jack Powell Edition, so we have that commercial lot in the up corner, your safety center, there's two multifamily lots. Another about a five-acre plot, the city's on, I'm privy, but we don't talk about it much, and then you can see about thirty-two homes. So if you look at this, is we, we're trying to go out about five, six years, what our housing needs for a single family, which includes twin homes or townhouses and multifamily in addition, so we're trying to run it out, where can we get land to get ahead of things and keep developing. So with some of the loans and things, we have about 110 beds, that's how the university talks, so we started talking that way for multifamily at Jack Powell. I'll let you digest that, and if you want to come, we'll have a couple sessions, you're welcome to come to on this update, do some more housing stuff. The last page I put in there, we won't go through it much, but it just what other communities across South Dakota, it's a map. About forty-four of them gave information on economic development. So you can see what are their priorities, you can see roughly how their funding comes from, you can see how their priorities changed over the last couple years. And most are like us, when we go through our goals and we did some strategic planning, it's really on housing. How do we better collaborate, city, county, our university, school districts. You know, you want to make sure our businesses are here, we keep them, can we expand them? Know what the workforce situation is, so we got to work on the childcare solutions. Now, how can we find enough things to do, so we bring tourists in and people spend time and money here to grow that tax base. And then there's a lot of other data, you can just read through that, or if you have questions. I did it in about ten minutes, good job.
Any questions or?
What, any thoughts, you know, and I'll probably do it going forward next year, two or three times, just to get you a quick snippet where we are, if we can't get to any. Probably hear some more on the capital campaign in the future, because we're really in year six, could have done it last year, but we need to do, just really be transparent, make sure everything's in order, and we're giving enough value to everybody that invests. With that, thank you for your time, have a great day.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for giving us a heads up. All right, thanks for giving us a heads up here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Quantify the return on investment there.
Yeah. So it looks like, next on the agenda is the nine-one-one communications director, Ryan, with a 2025 budget.
Yes, morning.
Good morning.
Morning. I'm Ryan Anderson, Director of the nine-one-one Communication Center, it's my 2020, 2025 budget. I should note, my budget is split between the city and the county equally. And I should also note, this is a union negotiation year, so these budget numbers for the personnel are an estimate, probably going to be pretty close, but that is still an ongoing negotiation. I'm not asking for anything out of the ordinary or big this year, I think that makes it two years in a row with a new building coming, I mean, we're going to be replacing all of our equipment at that time. So really not asking for big purchases, this is just kind of the standard operating stuff it takes to run the nine-one-one center for a year. Obviously, a majority of this is personnel, insurance and stuff like that. The only thing that looks a little odd, I did move one of my big items, I just moved it from equipment repair and maintenance up into the professional services. A lot of that is my software maintenance agreements and mapping, nine-one-one mapping and stuff, it just fits better in the, in the other category, so it wasn't really an increase, it just looks like one increased and one decreased, which it just kind of moved to a more appropriate line item. Other than that, again, not any big expenses planned again this year, just because of the new building is coming, and that will be a big enough expense, and we'll have a lot of our stuff replaced at that time.
Questions?
So when we replace all the equipment, where's that money sitting at right now then?
It's in the bond amount, I guess. I mean, we, we're gathering numbers about the estimate we're going to need for stuff, you're asking like how much that is going to be?
Well, I was just wondering where, where you were planning for the money to come from, because I know it's budgeted in here.
Yeah.
So it's part of the, worth assuming it's part of the bond.
Correct, yep, and Sheriff and I have been working on getting numbers to make sure we hold back enough money for the nine-one-one equipment and not putting it in other areas of the building and upgrades and stuff that weren't originally planned for, so, yeah, we are planning for that equipment.
Yep.
Any questions? Yeah, it looks pretty much like last year's.
Yep, yep, pretty, pretty similar. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So Carrie, that, that on page, is it fifty, that hundred eighty-eight thousand twenty-five dollars, that's, some of that's capital?
So you got forty-nine and fifty seem related, right?
So. Yes, the, so the nine-one-one budget gets split between the nine-one-one fund, the money that comes in for that and the county general, and this year we have, will have enough left in the funds to apply some of that to next year's budget. So we don't have as much coming out of county general for next year.
It's about a ten, ten thousand net increase altogether.
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the gray line on the main page shows you the
Yeah.
overall increase. All right, other, any, anything else on that? Then, next item on the agenda is Dr. Stanich from Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health. Welcome.
Good morning. Um, I usually do a quick overview of just all of our services, but this year is actually my thirtieth year. Oh, fine.
I can grab.
Thanks, Mike, I've got to pass these out. It's my thirtieth year upcoming before you with a budget request. And I'm going to ask you to indulge in a PowerPoint presentation today. I'm going to talk to you about our core center, which is our Crisis Care Center.
One night there for him.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think I have.
Thank you.
Um, and I think last year, I gave you some sense that this service was coming, and I'm going to be talking about the Core Center, and that's what we've, we've named our Crisis Care Center, and it's Crisis Outreach Response and Engagement. You're also going to hear me use the term appropriate regional facility, it's all the same, so Crisis Care Center or appropriate regional facility. They, we opened our Crisis Care Center officially in September of last year, and so the numbers I'm going to give you really relate from September through June, we don't have, have July yet. But just, just to give you an overview, and, and I've said this a lot when I've talked about the Core Center. But this is the biggest thing that's happened in behavioral health in my career, and I've been around for a while. And it's huge for counties, because the state is assuming some of the costs that counties used to be responsible for. Counties have historically been responsible for the pre-hearing commitment costs, so that would include costs of medical clearance, hearings, the certification evaluation, all of those kinds of things. Well, the, the Crisis Care Center kind of throws all those things together, and the state pays for it. So there's huge potential cost savings for the county. I think more importantly, and I'm going to talk a little bit, if you go to page two, talk a little bit about the goals of the Core Center. That it's there to take people, whether, regardless of their status, whether they're voluntary or involuntary. That we don't require prior medical clearance, and if you know how the systems work, sometimes that's an important thing to understand, and we take people regardless of their ability to pay. That we're providing an alternative to emergency rooms, and this really became a, a big issue during COVID. Because you had emergency rooms that were stacked full of people, and then you would have individuals with behavioral health crises, which probably wasn't the appropriate place for the individuals in the meantime, certainly replacing jails, so we don't have to hold people in jails who are on mental illness holes. Saving time for law enforcement personnel, and I can talk a little bit about that later, and then also saving time and resources for emergency medical personnel. That the Core Center, Crisis Center, that is in the, we're operating out of the Benedictine Center in Yankton right now, which is the old hospital. And that'll change, and I'll share with you a little bit about that in a little bit, but it's staffed with a qualified mental health professional from eight in the morning to eleven at night. There's licensed nursing staff twenty-four seven, there's behavioral health tech staff twenty-four seven. There's a certified nurse practitioner who's available Monday through Friday and on call, and then there's security staff on the twenty-four seven. Also, we collaborate with nine-eight-eight, so nine-eight-eight gets a call, they can't resolve it, the person needs additional support. They'll refer to us then, and we follow up, same with AVAL, which is of, of support for law enforcement in the field, if they can't resolve it there, we coordinate with AVAL, we get a report from AVAL each time they have a contact, so we can follow up. But if you go to the page four, right now we have eight beds. We're in the process of building a new facility on the north side of Yankton by the National Guard, in the summer of 2025, next July, we'll go to fourteen beds. That, one of the things that's really important to understand is that it's twenty-four seven voluntary or involuntary, people can walk in. We deal with the behavioral health crisis, no matter whether it's mental health or substance use. So that, that opens up a lot of opportunities for law enforcement, instead of using jail per public safety holds, law enforcement can bring an individual to us. That we do detox, certainly alcohol is probably the most risky detox. We, we are typically able to do detox, there are occasions when we do need to refer them to Avera Sacred Heart, because they've already gone into complicated withdrawal or, or something. Or they have other medical complications. The other thing that we're doing that is part of our Core Center is that we're doing next-day outreach, so if we have somebody in a more rural area, we have somebody that will go out either in person or through telehealth to follow up with that individual. That we are an appropriate regional facility, and we're, we are designated by the state to serve Region Four. And Region Four is kind of the light blue area on that map. There, the, the state has decided to go forward with developing regional crisis centers. There's one in Rapid City, there's one in Watertown, there's one in Yankton, they're trying to develop something in the middle part of the state, and then of course, Sioux Falls has appropriate regional facilities. An appropriate regional facility just refers to statues of, of, in the statute, when somebody is on a mental illness hold, it's a place where somebody can legally be taken to be held.
So what are the, the diamonds and the squares and the triangles represent?
Um, stars. So for us, those are where there are, where we have outreach with individual providers, most, we, we have telehealth and in just about all of the jails and the areas that we serve, sometimes like Hutchinson County just has a holding cell, so we do have the ability to do certification evaluations via telehealth if we need to. So that's what that represents. The community impact is slide seven, and that just shows you kind of Clay County. That this is from September through June of this year, that the total crisis contacts for the appropriate regional facility or core, the seven hundred and sixty, eighty-two of those were from Clay County. Unique individuals served, fifty-four were from Clay County, so you had some individuals that, you know, we had contact with more than once. And then the total admissions, and this is admissions to residential care, that people we can't resolve the crisis without having a residential placement is fifty-five. And then nine of the, of your admissions or contacts were kids, so that's that.
That's.
I just leave this here, but the, and if you can imagine this, the most QMP evaluations, meaning the number of individuals we were presented with one day who someone has alleged that they're a danger to themselves or others because of a mental illness, in one day was eleven, that's the the peak so far, so you can imagine the, the mental health professional being busy that day. And then the other thing, the medically cleared for inpatient, there, when we take somebody in residentially, there are times when we need to get them onto a higher level of care. And we're working with Avera, the Human Services Center, to accept our medical clearance, and that's a big deal for the counties, because if they don't accept our clearance and they have to go through an ED, the counties will get, often get billed for that. Slide eight just gives you an overview, and this is for everybody that we've served, but it's the best data we have in terms of how things look. That admission types, the most, the majority of them are, are voluntary. And that's really important to, for the counties to understand, because if there's a voluntary alternative, then the counties aren't involved at all, and so that's really, really important. That there are, and then you can see crisis care, substance use, et cetera. The, we, we worked with Avera Sacred Heart Hospital for the first three months that we were open. The, we we worked with a very sacred heart hospital for the first three months that we were open and tried to look at the experience they were having um, prior to us opening and then post us opening for three months. And we saw seventy percent reduction of our sacred heart did in ER visits. Um, uh, which is with, it's huge. The average daily census is two point three clients, average home stay is two point three days. It's turned out that way. Um, discharge dispositions, home sixty seven, these are people who are admitted to residential. Home is sixty seven percent. Avera Behavioral Health, eleven percent, HSC eight percent. Um, to a higher level of substance use treatment, uh, inpatient care or a halfway house, eleven percent. And then one percent, um, we just couldn't manage because of security. Those are individuals that that Yankton County essentially would um, hold in jail for us. And then less than one percent due to medical, we have somebody that presents, we just can't manage because of the medical issues. And then the the final um, slide talks about the outcomes. Um, significant reduction and and this is partly the state's interest. A significant reduction in the short term admissions to HSC. So you know, they were just getting bogged down with people coming in on commitments. Um, and then turning around and releasing them within three to five days. So that's been a significant reduction and it's really um, the skin that the state has in the game that they're really trying to reduce that and it has its work. Um, and then certainly increase access to voluntary admissions. Um, the state, this comes from the state, from the Division of Mental Health. But the um, cost comparison between an admission for us is six hundred and four dollars compared to twelve hundred and seventy four dollars to HSC. If you looked at a Vera, it would be more. Um, counties aren't getting paid, you know, the big difference is you're not, it's not costing the six hundred dollar admission fee for HSC. So cost avoidance for the counties, and this is, you know, really what I think is um, going in the right um, direction. Certainly increasing voluntary admissions takes counties out of the mix completely. Decrease in utilization of emergency departments. So you're not going to get the bills coming from um, EDs who are managing mental illness holds. Decrease in ED admissions for screening, um, and that's a work in progress, but we're trying to reduce that. And then certainly decrease in HSC or other inpatient facilities. And then decrease, and this is huge, and I think it's bigger than what most people think about. But decrease in law enforcement time and managing a mental illness hold. And it was not passed, it was not unusual for a law enforcement officer um, to have to spend ten, twelve, eleven, eleven, twelve hours with somebody waiting for an inpatient bed. We had a a regional meeting with Southeastern South Dakota Law Enforcement and Board Chairs. And one of the sheriffs raised their hand and said that first time they used our crisis care center, they thought they had done something wrong because they told them they could leave in fifteen minutes. So the just that turnaround time and getting and that and that becomes really, really important with some of the smaller municipal law enforcement agencies where they only have one person on. And so that's huge. Our budget, we're asking your account, my budget request to the last page. We're asking our accountants for a four percent increase this year. Um, or by county, that's twenty seven thousand five hundred and twenty two. They they have eighty cents. Um, um, it's not a lot of our budget, but it certainly helps us when we're negotiating with the state. State often asks what, you know, in this process, what are the towns contributing? And we can point to your contribution. So questions?
So for the budget last year, we gave twenty thousand six fifty four. Yeah, but is this is this combining the drug abuse?
Yeah, it comes out as two separate budgets.
Okay.
Other questions?
Oh, good, good presentation. Yeah, really, really clear.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate your work. Thank you.
Michael Stead's attorney's budget.
Yes, and before we do budget, I think the first one was the Westlaw contract.
Oh, sorry. Yep.
Perfect. So attorney, I did get confirmation from Westlaw on this. Of course, we discussed this at the last meeting. Um, you know, there was this hesitation I have on the potential utilization of AI services being more important in the legal uh, field in the next, you know, who knows with the next two to three years hold. So um, the contract that we have in play, we're running here two, three years. Um, I'm able to confirm with um, Westlaw that we can engage them in a three year contract. We can always expand it uh, or engage in a new contract, essentially cancel this one, get a new one, no penalty. As long as we're going up, you know, in price, which we would be doing if we decided to go to AI. So with that, I feel kind of very confident and my recommendation would be to sign the three year contract with uh, Westlaw. Of course, it's the cheapest per month, um, since we're engaging them in a longer term um, contract. So if you don't have any questions, I do have it. I think I just need your signature ready.
All right. Move to approve the three year contract second.
Is the motion to approve the three year contract with Westlaw? Um, any further discussion?
Concerns Dave.
Right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We'll get that submitted today.
So budget.
Budget, yes.
The budget's not on the agenda.
Oh, it's that?
It is. It got added late. Yes, yesterday morning.
Yep.
So it's on, it was by the wrong agenda then?
Maybe further down.
It was a just before nine AM edition yesterday, because I thought I was gonna have to skip away from meeting. Did you send that out then, Carrie?
I thought I did.
I don't think I have that.
No.
I know it's posted on the door of the courthouse this way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and it got posted on the website too.
Yeah. So I feel confident going with it. It's up to you guys. Um, all right, so let's see, if you need a minute to get to it, go.
Yeah, let's pull her.
Ready?
Yep.
All right, so um, as it relates to, you know, salaries, of course, we're at that. Uh, this has been presented with the the increases requested by the commission. Um, the professional services and fees is a little bit uh, an increase of a thousand dollars there. The reason for that is the NDA dues last year when we had the reduction in the, you know, where everybody kind of cut the ten percent off of their their budget request. That was one of the items that I removed. I'm putting it back on there. Um, accounting for a little higher potential bar dues and then also the new coffee machine has a little bit higher expense that we're ultimately paying at the end of the day too. Repairs and supplies, I didn't add anything back to. I feel like we've been pretty comfortable there. We've been at supplies at four thousand dollars for a while. Um, I think this year we might go a little bit over, but I feel like I've always got a little other room um, in other areas of my budget to kind of cover that. And Linda's cautious about what she's purchasing and um, I'm cautious about that as well as we go through the year. Um, really the big request, of course, outside of um, you know, that we're talking about here would be travel um, expenses. I did ask for an additional thousand dollars in training registration fees. Um, it's just expensive unless you're going to the free conferences, which are oftentimes um, great. Um, but limited in the scope of what, you know, you're you're really at there. Um, you know, at the hair, whatever they decide to put on for the conference that year at the state's attorney conference. That's a free conference that paid through partially through the dues that we pay to the state's attorneys association. Um, but really any extra type of trainings that we I try to send folks to either myself or someone from my office. If you recall last March, I think it was Lexi that was in front of you guys asking for additional money to send two attorneys to um, a training that was eight hundred and fifty dollars a person. And that's really what it's at anymore. It's at least eight hundred and fifty dollars um, for most trainings uh, that are, you know, four to five days in in length in the legal field. Uh, I discussed with you guys last year that South Dakota is, I think, the only state now in the uh, without um, CLE requirements from attorneys, but I I you know, believe strongly that we should still be attending conferences and getting trainings that are pertinent to us. Um, the state's attorneys conference every year is great, but again, Wednesdays they do DUI training and that's been a staple and a tradition. Um, and then Thursdays and Fridays, they bring folks in and they do trainings and they're trying to kind of change up how they do that. But it's really just impossible to to get training on the entire scope of what a prosecutor's office does from the civil, you know, work that we provide to the commission and to department heads to the prosecution of, you know, met misdemeanor and felony offenses all the way up to um, you know, homicide in some cases. So there's a huge scope and a huge area of law that we practice in and it's really difficult to get all of that training in. Um, and so I think that increasing the training registration fees for the office um, will ultimately lead to better trained attorneys that are more capable in the areas of law that they need to be practicing it. Uh, so that was a request on that. And the only other real request was um, in the equipment, which was again, kind of a bite back a little bit of that ten percent that uh, was given back at the request of the commission last year. I guess they had an in some. Um, really the big one here was the increase in the computer and software. Um, you know, computers, again, we buy one about annually in the office. We intend on buying one annually. And um, they're expensive, but they're really what we utilize for our everyday work. Whether it's Linda and Victoria or the three attorneys, you know, we really rely on um, high functioning software um, and computer systems. Uh, we also are in a position right now where we've been this way for, I think, about eighteen months where um, our storage is at capacity. So I need to really sit down with Ericsson's and see what it looks like to increase. I didn't know that's going to be expensive. Um, so we've been managing and how we do that is by going through and really cleaning up old cases. We can put them onto Paper Vision, which is the system that stores everything dating back to two thousand and eleven. Uh, but our current cases that we're running exist on our software system um, and on the cloud. So I have to have Linda and Victoria spend a lot of their time. Uh, and it's okay, they ultimately have to do it at some point. It's part of their job, but sometimes they have to um, neglect some of their more pertinent duties in order to get us back under um, where we are allowed to have for storage. So we were really at the maximum capacity right now. So that increase on the computer and software is going to allow me the opportunity to continue to buy high functioning um, computers and software, but then also look into Ericsson's for potential um, storage uh, increases as well. Um,
That's the minor equipment line?
That's the equipment line, yes. And then uh, and so that's really about it. Um, you know, those were the 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 changes. They weren't major by any means. Um, as it relates to the to everything maybe other than salary, of course, with the increases there. So.
Yeah, so I uh, I think certainly investments in training are a great, we get a good return on investment in those when you just think about what we might be avoiding in terms of lawsuits in trouble. That seems really important. I was curious about the salaries.
Yep.
And wages line, I just, it seemed like more than a seven percent increase and I threw it in my calculator and it's it's a bit more than that. Uh, is.
And you're, it isn't for anyone other than myself. If that is, and that should be right. I guess maybe you should double check that, but I think the math on everyone else's comes down. Except for the, they also know they have the steps and scales increase as well.
Okay.
So um, Victoria and Caitlin are not getting a step increase this year. But um, Katie and Linda will.
Got it.
Because we were, you know, of course we extended the matrix.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, other questions?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And Andy Schultz for the Boys and Girls. Welcome.
These on here.
Yep.
County Commissioners, good morning. Andy Schultz. Um, most of you are probably familiar with my my role here with First Bank and Trust in Vermillion downtown. Um, but I'm here today and like I have here a couple of times as my role with the Boys and Girls Club of Vermillion as advisory council member. Uh, as a board member for the Boys and Girls Club of the Northern Plains and then ultimate just cheerleader and advocate for the club and and what we're doing. Uh, we're here today um, not with looking for any sort of a signature from the county commissioners at this point, but just in general um, looking for support on a sponsorship for an application with the uh, South Dakota Go Ed Community um, Block Grant Funding. Um, we started this process earlier this year. Um, thinking we had a plan in place to get an application in their first round of applications in in April and just for unforeseen uh, circumstances, that didn't end up being the case. Didn't allow county commissioners uh, really uh, time at all to review uh, our application at that time, just given given our circumstances. So just getting ahead of it with you guys this go around. Um, as we prepare our application, so applications are due the first of October. Uh, we're hoping that by the end of August, we kind of have something in writing from a potential sponsor. So just uh, so everyone's aware, uh, the Community Block Grant Funding requires a sponsorship from, I believe, either the city or the county. Um, and so just going to give you a quick update on the club, what our potential application and ask will look like. And then obviously have a more formal application for you for you to review and and ultimately sign off on if you choose to do so. Uh, quick up update on the club, uh, as you guys are are aware. Um, you know, we're just wrapping up our second year in existence here um, with the Boys and Girls Club of Vermillion. Um, Boys and Girls Club of the Northern Plains is over twenty years old. Uh, we currently have clubs in Brookings where we started. Uh, Yankton and Flandu, Flandrew or Moody County, both approaching about ten years in existence. Um, a a track record in each of these communities uh, in the in the, you know, the youth that we serve. Um, we went into recent years, um, kind of taking a bit of a stance as a club in being champions for our youth. And I think we've we've been able to do that in in many ways. Um, we have uh, we have received two Community Block Grant Funding um, applications here in recent years. Uh, one in Moody County for around a million dollar expansion. And then uh, one recently in Brookings for an early, early uh, early childhood uh, education center that um, if you've followed the news um, on on recent events up there, kind of I think we kind, we kind of saw that stance come full, full circle and champion our our youth when a best community like Brookings and many others face a lot of challenges with um, having daycare available for for kids and and infants even. That they looked for, uh, they looked for someone to help spearhead uh, that really a crisis at this point. And Brookings is doing uh, great things as far as getting the club involved to open uh, a couple of different areas of um, of slots, but they total about three hundred and sixty new slots in Brookings only um, by no later than twenty year in twenty twenty five. So doing a lot of good things as as it relates to Vermillion here. Uh, like I said, just wrapping up our our second year, uh, we kind of have two models with the club, um, two main models. One being what we call an academy or a fee based model where as it stands today, it's a hundred and twenty five dollars a month for after school care for for kids uh, to enroll in the club, uh, kindergarten through through high school. Um, and then the other, and then then a summer programming is a hundred and twenty five dollars a week. Um, and we originally had monthly, but we decided to go with weekly this summer and that's been good for for the club and our families. Uh, the other model um, that we see as well in our other communities is um, what we call a traditional model or a drop in, drop in type opportunity for for youth. And historically, that has been twenty five dollars a year. And then an extra twenty five dollars uh, for summer programming. So as you can, you know, as you can, um, you know, as as you can see that that's picks up a lot of a lot of youth that otherwise maybe can't afford, you know, can't afford that care that that um, that has been very instrumental in in our other communities. The ask that will be uh, from the Clay County Commissioners sponsoring our application for this grant opportunity really helps fund the potential to open that traditional, that traditional model. Our funding uh, primarily uh, is for annually for operating expenses. Obviously capital improvements when you consider possibly renovating a sixty year old building like the the Austin building, which we are uh, very grateful the school district gifted to us, but obviously comes with some renovations that we need to do. Uh, and then ultimately an endowment, which does fund uh, our operating budget. And then ultimately an endowment, which does fund our operating budgets in some capacity at our other communities. Having something like this block grant opportunity fund a good chunk of what it would take to renovate. Take care of that capital expenditure of renovating Austin would really kind of leapfrogs in some ways. The, the goals that we have financially. Grant opportunities, the maximum is two million dollars. Again, we received some pretty good, pretty good grants in other communities that we have applied in. And, and we'll, again, we'll kind of have what our final dollar amount would be, but essentially. In order to, in order to open that traditional model. It really, we have to open up the sightlines within Austin as it currently sits, obviously. A, a school in the, you know, late fifties, early sixties, kind of smaller classrooms, walls everywhere. In order for us to serve as many kids that we would take on by opening a traditional school. We really have to be able to open up sightlines, take down some walls, obviously do some asbestos treatment. And then build things kind of back to suit us. And so, you know, as, as you can assume that that is fairly expensive, so. That's ultimately what our application will likely consist of, but again, we'll have a more. A more final product for you to review and ultimately, you know, approve or deny your, your sponsorship, so. Here today, just, just looking for general support for the club and the idea of sponsoring us on this application. I would ask if that once we get closer to school starting and the club being fully, fully. Staffed this, staffed and enrolled in the, for the, for the, for the summer or excuse me, the fall semester. That I'll probably be in your inbox with an opportunity to tour the club. That, that's a great opportunity to see just what. Goes on right now. You can kind of hit or miss with, with kids in the club. A lot of times they're, they're at the pool and, and doing different things, but. They got a lot of stuff going on. We got a great garden club that we've taken kind of the back. Playground and implemented a lot of garden beds and just different things that, that people are doing, so. It's, it's great addition to the community here these last couple of years and just looking to expand on. The services we offer to the, to the people we serve, so. With that, I'd open up any questions. Again, I'm, I'm joined here with my, our chief operating officer for the. Boys and Girls Club of the Northern Plains, Becky Jennings, and she might be the one to, to answer more specifics.
I'm curious, how, how many youth are served now and how many would you expect to be served? If you manage to, to expand to the traditional model?
Right now, we have about a hundred and seventy eight kids on the books. We average probably about eighty to eighty five a day, and that changes, especially during the summer. And we're hoping to expand to about three to four hundred kids.
And what's the age range that you serve?
We are serving right now K through high school, so K through twelve. Next fall, we'll be having some pre-K kids with us in our academy, so very excited about that.
Yep, and then those are some of the kind of like preschool age spaces that we're going to have available for, for youth in the community, which that's really a critical need.
Yeah, and I guess one thing that maybe I've been a little more involved with, maybe more so than Becky is working with Jim Peterson at the, the Vermillion Chamber. When Go Ed awarded them the daycare implementation grant that kind of did a lot of the same things as far as. Improving quality care and increasing slots available for kids. That a fair amount was awarded to the Boys and Girls Club to do different. Different improvements, a lot of safety, security type stuff, which was obviously great, great as well. But it did see us engage in a process of collaborating with area. Daycares, USD Head Start, the Kuravich, you know, Pulse Daycare Center for Children's Families, all these kind of get around the table and. Prepare that application for this money, and then ultimately they get awarded that money, which it didn't go to everybody, I think seventeen. Awarded seventeen out of forty one ish applicants. So a credit to, to Jim and that entire team of collaborating, but it brought a conversation about what, what we. You know, what areas we could improve, and it did see us potentially take on partners in the Austin, in the Austin School that. Will, you know, kind of expand our services even further.
Yeah, that seemed like really good leveraging that the collaboration seemed like really valuable, because you guys are going to provide like a wraparound, is that right? So like people have a half day in the public. Public school, and then they can have the other half day at your facility. That's really great.
That three hundred that you're planning, how many of those would be at the Austin site?
Majority of them, we will have still sites at the middle school and high school for after school program. For tutoring, et cetera, so most of them will be at the Austin site.
I see.
And just to make sure I'm clear, so then the, the, the primary purpose of this goal will be capital improvements at the Austin School Site for the grant, is that right?
Correct, I don't, I don't think that really the, the grant can fund like operating expenses or salaries or anything like that. It is for. Pretty much entirely for that purpose.
So I can personally voice my, my support for what you guys are working on, and I'm excited to see the, the final application.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Delighted, and I, you know, it really, I did get a chance to tour the Boys and Girls Club here. And was really excited at just the level of activity enthusiasm.
When was the last time you were in there, Betty?
Yeah, it was not too many weeks ago, maybe.
Yeah, well, they're just doing a lot of, a lot of construction. We just had to bring, you know, certain things up to speed for, for codes and stuff that. Saw a fair amount of work already being done this summer. But again, it looks a lot different in the fall when, you know, there's a lot of kids going to the club after school and a, a pretty high energy, so. I'll, I'll get in your inbox and see if we can align a time to just have you all come walk through the club some afternoon after school.
Yeah, there were a couple dozen kids and sprinklers on the lawn.
Very popular activity.
Oh, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, Rod. Got a request for ditch cleaning?
Yeah, Gordon Anderson is here. Talk about it. Ditch cleaning request, you want to? Go ahead, Gordon.
We can share, we get on.
Well, I guess. From the map there, you can see that we have a little bit of a drainage issue, and. We're proposing to be able to replace the culvert. That I have in the drawing there. Because it's about a foot and a half down in the ground. And it's pretty well plugged and it's creating a dam. On both the dairy's side of the property and my side of the property. And we're just proposing to be able to find a solution. That you guys would find acceptable. I talked with Larry and met with him out there. And so. I guess we propose maybe doing a let's make a deal kind of deal. You guys probably don't want to fund the whole thing. But we would probably be willing to offset a bunch of that by doing the work ourselves. And under the supervision of Rod and Larry. But I guess I don't know what kind of a deal we can make. You know, I don't suppose you guys are going to want to clean it out at the county's cost.
So we, we've done, we've done similar projects. In the past. And. I guess I'm, I'm not sure what size the culvert is.
It's probably a twelve or fifteen, but you know, the, the driveway is very, very narrow. And Aaron and Aaron from the dairy. They cut silage and do stuff up there, and they've got a lot of larger trucks that come in and out of there. And so if they would like to make the driveway a little wider. I believe that they're willing to offset that cost. Above and beyond what is existing now, to make it bigger and better and. Just make access a little bit better for us. Their culverts. It's eighteen E seven. But it is about a foot and a half under the. Ground right now, and that's all silted in on the north side to obstruct the, the flow.
So it's pretty much completely plugged at this point.
It's silted in pretty good.
Would we have to adjust the elevation of it or would there?
I don't know if the elevation would have to change from the bottom of the culvert as much as just. They're silted in below the culvert and it's silted in above the culvert and over the culvert.
And we'd have to clean the ditch then?
That's what we're wanting to do north up there. You can see on the north side a culvert's going across there. Then there's two culverts that go south on the, the drawing there. One goes across between them and me, and then the ones at the half mile line go straight south. That one is plugged, and then that continues down to the mile road down below that. And the water wants to run over that gravel road there at that intersection on the east side. Because of the amount of flow that's there, so that would probably. Have to be upsized a little bit too.
We can't do that.
Well, it needs to be cleaned out no matter what.
Well, we can't upsize.
We'd need to probably clean the dirt out above it and below it. And then the water continues south on the east side of the road. And then it goes down to two large culverts. That carry the water from the east side university over to the west side, and then it goes down to the creek. So I, I don't know if you guys are willing to cost share or. How you're willing to work with us on it.
So I guess in the past, we've. Done similar projects. You know, usually it's at the. Landowner's expense, but also if they're going to widen. The driveway, that would be a permit needed for that. But, I mean, whatever you think. If we could help, I, you know, I'm, I'm. We've never done it. We've never put a new pipe in for. For anybody, you know, without any cost. So, but they have cleaned out the ditch. We've had other landowners at their request to you guys clean out the ditch. You allow that, they reseed it, we keep an eye on it, everything's good. But, so if we're just going to do a. A driveway permit to widen it, they would have to either add on to the culvert that's there or purchase. A new culvert, depending on what the pipe look like. And I'm assuming it's a steel pipe, correct? Which, so if the pipe's in good shape, they could just. Put an extension on it to make their driveway wider.
You don't, we don't really have any idea what shape the pipe is in at this point, do we?
It's kind of hard to tell.
Might be best to assume the worst.
I think it's needing to be replaced, you know, if it's been under the ground too long and. And it's just. It's not a big driveway, it's probably quite dated.
What are you, what are you guys thinking for a width? I mean, for a width of a driveway, what do you look at? We usually try to get a three to one slope on it, so if you're, you're looking for a sixty foot top. Or sixty foot. So then you're probably going to need a eighty foot pole.
Bigger equipment, I mean, any more trucks and stuff, that's just the safest way to do it, you know what I'm saying? So if we do it the way we've been doing it, it's on the landowner to, to do it.
I'm getting really deaf.
So if we, the way we've been doing it is Rod explained, is it's the landowner's expense to clean and replace the culvert.
Yeah, I get that, but I mean, as far as the rest of the project, I mean, that is, there's a lot more to this project than just replacing the culvert.
Right, the cleaning of the ditch.
Yeah, and I guess we need their approval and we need to see if you guys would help us out somehow.
But that's what he, that's what he's saying. In the past, it's all the, the landowners take care of it.
All of the dirt silt removal.
Is on the landowner. That's the way it's been. It's the way we've always operated.
Well, I, I know you don't have money, but it would be nice to have a little. Help on these, you know, it really, I don't believe is our responsibility in the first place to do it. Maintaining a ditch in a, a oil road, you know. Anyway, if that's how you do it, that's how you do it, but we would need, we would need to have some guidance and. Have them tell us how far we're supposed to try go on this.
So I know it's, I mean, you're talking on and inside of the, of the road, does, does he know about this?
Yeah, well, this is Aaron, the farm manager for the dairy, and they rent the ground.
Right, but they won't be paying the bill, or will they? So I mean, before we approve anything. I want him to know what's going on.
Yeah, I agree, yeah. I guess I thought maybe we were already in that area, but we're not.
Well, not if he doesn't know yet.
No, no, I know, but I, I guess it. We'll make sure that happens and we'll get back to you. In the meantime, is that something that Rod thinks would be acceptable, given Andon's approval?
I don't see a problem with it. I mean, the dishes, the, the culverts, if they're plugged, they need to work.
Okay, what about the mile corner down below that then? That needs dirt removed to, to be able to get it to flow correctly.
You're talking a three oh one?
Yep, north and south.
Did you look at that at all there? We can take a, we can take a look at that and see what that needs. But. That's the problem, you start upstream. It needs to. Should start downstream working way up, but. So I mean, if they're doing the upside, the down end. Should be looked at too, I guess I.
Well, that's what I mean, that this project is more than just the culvert. We've got to get cleared down to those large culverts. You know, and I understand that, and that's where we would start, but we have to have the approval to do the top before we're going to do the bottom.
So then we need to talk to Dan, Danny Johnson also, or Rick, Randy Johnson. That's this one, south three oh one.
We're still on the east side, correct? All of this would be on the east side university.
Those two big culverts though that cross over from Johnson's onto you, they're fine, right?
Well, they've cleaned that out going south on the west side of the road, so that part is good. From there on the east side going north, I think it's silted in.
Right, but the culverts are fine that cross the road.
Yeah, because I think we just inspected them. I'm not sure. We got too many culverts on. Off top my head, but I think that they were fine.
I don't think there's any holes in there or anything, so. Well, it sounds like we need to talk to Andon to get back to you then, huh? Okay, well, I thank you for your time, and on another note, I'd say thank you all for doing this job. It's a, a big job, so thank you.
What was Randy's last name?
Johnson.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to go into ditch board? Some motion in a second to go into ditch board. All those in favor, say aye. All right, Travis.
We're in ditch board. So we've got to pay for a culvert that was into the clay crypt ditch. Only question Rod was the thirty six by thirty foot culvert, that was only nine hundred and seventy six dollars.
Yeah, the same question.
But the thirty six by forty was twenty three hundred and ninety six dollars.
I was like, should we just get two of the little guys and stick them together and?
Cut off what we don't need?
The top number looks right, the second one doesn't.
All right, I was like, quick, buy two of those, cut off what we don't need and save it for something else.
One of those, one of those lateral fifty in that hayfield? Or one of those?
No, these, this is just what Don Log picked up, that was just that one, he banded it together. He made a seventy footer out of it. At least that's the invoice I got.
That number does, the totals does sound right, let me, let me check. Make sure.
And then that one for top by.
Yeah, that, did that ever get put in, you know? It's been laying up there.
Right, so we probably should get it paid for.
I mean, that, I don't think we've sent in a bill for that pipe yet, right?
No, we haven't seen anything.
That was like a forty foot. Eighty, forty eight inch, and that, that's kind of a big one.
And then the one on by Farrelly's. I don't think we paid for that one yet.
No, that one's laying in the backyard, cause we went down to put it in and he wouldn't let us in, so. Do you wanna, you wanna pay for that before we put it in or just wait till installation?
Well, what do you want, what do you think we need to do?
Well, it'd be nice to get paid for it if you have it.
Then let's pay for it.
Yeah, we'll get him, we'll sell you, mint a bill and I'll check those.
And I won't be at the next meeting, so we'll have to wait. So entertain a motion to table this.
Move to table.
A motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Both same sign, motion passes. Anything else for ditch board? I'll entertain a motion to come on a ditch board.
Move to come out of ditch board.
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye. Both same sign, motion passes, we're in regular session, Eddie.
Yeah, I see Brad wasn't here for that little slump. Just a heads up on that, I believe we talked about it. The last time, but it's, the dollar amount is gonna be the same, but they gotta change the order. Cause they did more of the large knockout uh concrete removal than they did. The small, it kind of swapped around, that's what the. Um, change order is gonna be, so the dollar amount never changed from the. But they, going through the state, you have to keep those line items, they gotta. Be changed, but the overall dollar amount, so. And that, that is Yachts Bridge and. Bridge on University, after the flooding, they did get that done last week. Signs are up, that was epoxy chip seal, that's all good to go. So, um, the only other concerns right now are the Dakota Street Bridge. And Dawson, and Larry and I stopped and looked at them again before we came up, the water's going down and. There's gonna be a couple of very large. Projects there to um stabilize, make stabilization mainly. Gonna have to clean the channel back out, slope re-rip wrap, a lot of the rip wrap washed out. Is laying down in the river, not doing us any good on the Dawson Bridge. I don't know, the Dakota Street Bridge southwest side. Has gotta cut way back in, river comes back out and they're afraid. If it keeps working that way, it's gonna eventually cut us off on the south side of the bridge, so. And Brad was supposed to meet with us last week, and I emailed him this morning, I didn't know he wasn't gonna be here today. So um, we gotta get together with them and find out what kinda. Team of money, federal money, what ever we can get, cause that's gonna be a pretty good sized project, way over. Way over our heads, there's no way we can attack that. So, I mean, it's gonna have to be let out for a project and I'd like to get hopping on it just cause. The river is really low, thank goodness, but um unfortunately, we can see all the. More damage every week when you drive by, so there's a lot of trees, we're gonna have to cut out and so. Just so I give you a heads up.
One, that's, well, cause we did all the public assistance stuff last week. Uh, the county wasn't on it. Very reasonably certain that we're gonna get a presidential out of this. Talk, once they have the kickoff meetings, talk to the FEMA people because that's a four oh four mitigation thing. That they may be willing to, you know, other than just the putting the rip wrap in. They may be willing to help.
Make it better.
Make it better for the future with it.
There's a lot more than the rip wrap, but the rip wrap is gonna be unbelievable amount.
Yeah, so I I would talk with the mitigation folks once it's all, so.
You haven't heard a date when they're.
Um, all of the, all of the totals were finished up last Thursday, Friday. Uh, at the state level, goes to the governor's desk. They make the determination whether or not, and then it goes to the feds, I, I don't know, um, let's see. I would have guessed maybe sometime next week, we'll hear. We'll hear from the feds next week? I would assume so, it'll probably, once it gets sent to to the president, it will pro likely be a week. Or so.
Cause I believe she sent it last week.
Did, okay.
At least that's what the paper reported that.
Okay, so it might be this week or something like that that we hear then.
So the worst part about that, this, alls I had for those two bridges was a. Seven thousand dollar inspection fee because we couldn't see, so that, none of this was on my totals.
And that doesn't, and that doesn't matter.
And we still, still don't know, cause we need to meet with engineers, but. Yeah, it's gonna, I've never seen any. And all the time I've been there, I've never seen it wash on that, even in two thousand nineteen, we never had this much. On that bridge, I'm just, I wanna get something. Figured out or, we have a critical finding on it, so they are staying open. There's no weight limits need to be put up and they're staying open, that's. That was the main thing, so I mean, all those critical findings have been turned in to the feds already too, so. But just a heads up that there's gonna be two, we're getting pretty close on all the other flood stuff. They're working on three hundred street as we speak, re-graveling it. So that should be good to go, I believe Tabernacle Road is good to go, we have a bunch of small. Cleanup things to get to, we haven't even fired up the paper yet this year. So we are so far behind, it ain't even funny, but.
You're missing these really nice hot days to do that too.
Right, that's what I said, beautiful day, it was a hundred and eight hours. But anyway, I just wanted you to heads up, thanks for the update.
Yeah, um, I mean, it's still the county's responsibility to fix it, but there. Is likely going to be a chance to get seventy five percent of it back at some point anyway. So, all right.
Thanks, that's, that's all I have, anything. I guess we had a tree, couple of trees over the weekend, one last night, one Saturday night, they're removing. I don't know what happened, but below the hills. It is just, there's trees down everywhere on the bottom along here. I, we didn't, we had, we drove between the bridges and.
It was all of a sudden. Two inches of rain in a half hour or something.
Boy, the wind must blew down here. I I don't know what it is on up here, but, yeah, with some.
Lot of, lot of branches down in my neighborhood, it's like big.
Yeah, there's trees and.
It's getting raining, we're kinda.
This morning.
Sidewalk got wet.
Uh, last night got wet, it rained pretty good this morning, fifteen minutes, so, that's pretty good rain up there. Thank you.
All right, thanks Rod. Hey, Lane, we've got your quarterly report.
Yeah, um, I believe Kerry sent it out to y'all whenever, but. So, I'll just, I guess I'll just answer any questions, uh. Uh, as you know, uh, things may not have been as active as normal, uh, June was a pretty tough month. For me, so there's some days in there where I wasn't out and about and all that, so.
So, any questions?
Move to approve this signature for the quarterly report.
A second.
The motion in a second to approve, um, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. And then we got your budget.
Uh, just for the signature page, today is the last day to hit the deadline to turn that in. Um, if you could sign it and email it to me rather quickly, that would be.
If you wanna sign it and I'll sign it and we can just give it to you, Lane.
That, that'll work and I'll send you a copy of it or something. Yes, the state reminded me yes, yesterday that tomorrow is the last day. Okay, budget wise, um. Not gonna talk about salaries, that is, that's entirely up to you folks, you ought to figure that out, but. Everything's basically the same for me, um, I did up some a little bit, just because things have gotten more expensive. You know, travel is a little bit more, even state rates at motels are a hundred and seven dollars now. And all of that, so the training and the supplies and all that, um, I did up slightly just for cost increases. Some things are still up in the air, uh, I have no idea what Department of Health is gonna do for POD. Uh, whether or not there's any money for that, so.
They might not know either.
And that's, yeah, yeah, I have my issues with the Department of Health and all that, but. For the most part, it was, it's pretty much a status quo situation for me, or at least trying. To be that way until we're in the new building and have some things figured out at that point to what we can and can't do, so.
Questions?
Rod's gone, so, I always try to get in first, so, one percent of the budget maybe. And then that way, you guys aren't mad, huh?
I don't even think you're one percent.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, so before you you get mad and see all the other totals for the highway department. Or Andy's here, that'll probably do it, so.
I don't think we'll get very mad at you, Lane, so.
Well, if there's no other questions, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Well, I got four budgets to go with you. I go ahead and knock out the the easy ones first. Uh, the twenty four seven budget, as you're aware, is not general fund money. Uh, self-funded program, I didn't request any changes in there, I think we're pretty much hitting that about where it needs to be, we just have to put money in the. The lines for spending authority and it seems like we're hitting that about right. We use twenty four seven money to offset some wages for jailers, uh, that take their time away from jail duties to do twenty four sevens. And I I communicate with the Otter's Office, make sure we're hitting that about right, we get uh grant money back from the state program. To help with that uh staffing, so, seems like that's working pretty well, so I have no requests on that, if you don't have any questions about that. I'll move on to the um coroner budget. Coroner budget, I did ask for an increase on um the line item for autopsies, I just added one autopsy for next year, just trying to make sure we don't. Go over, um, we do a few autopsies a year, they cost about twenty five hundred dollars each. So, I try to, try to control as best I can, but when I just don't know, I do an autopsy or if they um. If it's a, you know, some criminal nature, then we have to do one. Any questions about coroner budget? No, I'll jump into the big ones then. On the jail, uh, do have um a similar budget to last year, although some stuff's moved around. Uh, everybody's talked about salaries, we've already met and discussed some, some payroll changes, uh, presuming you approve them, this is what I have in there. Um, I did reduce the request for it out of county boarding, and that's just looking at previous years. And the the usage we've had of other jails, we do our best to try to control that, we try to keep our people here a couple of days as best we can and then um. And then move them out if we, if we have to, uh, we've been running in the neighborhood of thirty two thousand dollars a month for housing out of county. Um, this year, we're on track uh to meet, to spend about four hundred thousand dollars this year, although I'm budgeted for five hundred thousand. So that's why I reduce next year to four hundred thousand. Um, if our population were to go up, that that could change and uh our needs would change, but I don't wanna. I don't wanna to cause an opt out, that's why I requested four hundred thousand, I want that to cause an opt outs. I I increased juvenile detention, um. That's been at about thirty five thousand for a while, uh, some years that's more than plenty, and some years it's not nearly enough. This year, we've already spent sixty one thousand dollars, we've got a few kids that'll sit in there for for months and that'll do it to us. Most of our kids don't spend that amount of time, in uh twenty twenty one, we spent sixty five thousand dollars for the year. Uh, this year, we're almost there now in July, and uh, but yet in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, we're. We were under the thirty five thousand dollar budget line, so, rather than come in here and that request seventy five thousand and always hit it and then. Possibly give back fifty thousand dollars, I've always just kinda tried to follow a trend. And and come in if I need to, uh, out of contingency, so that's where I'm at now, even though we're, we we've had a few bad years, we've had a few good years too, so. I just increased that request to fifty five thousand dollars. Um, and you know, I think it's appropriate to do that, even if our numbers were to stay the same as they were in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, because the JDC increased. What, four hundred, roughly four hundred and fifty dollars a day per kid, so, that that expense is gonna be there. Other than that, I don't have uh much in the way of increases at all, um, I did, I did increase the furniture line just because we don't know. When we get into the jail, uh, the furniture and equipment is part of the bond, but you just never know, you know. Three months after everybody's gone and the, and that's all said and done, we might find a need for some sort of piece of equipment, so I did increase that. To three thousand dollars to make sure that we could buy if we needed another computer, some monitors or something, we could do that. Any question about jail budget?
What happens if we get into the new jail, say first of July?
Well, then my thought is, my hope is that we'll be on track with that boarding line. And essentially, we'll have a surplus there that we can use to offset uh expenses, which. There will be expenses moving in because we'll need some additional staffing, and when we get a firm target date. I'll meet with you and we'll decide when we're gonna hire those folks and get them trained and hopefully not too long before we. Hopefully not too long before we move in because once we move in. We'll cease to house our inmates out of county. And so, uh, we wanna measure that. I just got a project scheduled yesterday. I'll, Travis, if you got it, look through it, but it actually has us moving in in March of twenty-twenty-six. I I don't believe it, but that's what they have us down for, so I think we're gonna be in there uh, earlier than that, so.
That's their, with the rain delays and everything, that is their day.
Yep, they're they're protecting themselves on that. Uh, I'm confident, uh, you know, rain last night probably didn't have anybody. Too happy this morning at that construction site. They're, they're, they're working toward getting the roof uh, closed in. They're working toward getting the. The concrete poured and they just need some good weather to get us there and um. Uh, then things will really pick up steam and there will be delays occasionally, I'm sure because of materials. Uh, deliveries, um, and maybe some some contractor issues, but then weather hopefully will stop being such a factor for them. And they can get that project on schedule, but um, I think they'll get ahead of steam going and I think that they'll get us in there before twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, yeah, cuz March twenty-twenty-six is a frightening date.
Yeah, we we don't want that.
Yeah.
And uh, I'm I'm confident uh, that they're gonna have us in there by next fall.
Okay.
And so, and I hope, I hope that the the earlier, the better, the earlier that that we can get in, the more of a surplus we'll have in that that boarding line. And that we'll be able to to get ourselves up and going to. It's too bad that we won't be in there in time to have some sort of um. History that we can extrapolate out and decide when I do my twenty-twenty-six budget. It's it's gonna be a guess. Um, because we'll be, I'll probably have submitted the twenty-sixth budget before we even get in the building.
So what are the, what are the staffing dynamics then? So you would add maybe one more staff?
One per shift.
In the jail.
Per shift.
And so.
I'm taking five to six jailers.
Five to six jailers, okay.
Yep, we we ideally will have a staffing of three on duty at all, at all times. Right now, we have one to two. And uh, that one is on overnight shift. We can't can operate it with one because somebody's gotta run the doors in the new jail. They walk around with keys now. And um, so then, and then because we're running doors, we need another person on the floor and, and so we'll have a. We'll have to to look at adding another person per shift and and uh, my intention, we actually redesigned back when we saw this need was gonna be there. And added beds um, to the design. We actually added more minimum security type beds so we can board more inmates and offset that. If I, I think if I can can house ten inmates from another county, I can offset that staffing increase.
Okay, all right.
So hopefully we can house twenty, or you know, I will have room for it.
And if we, if we did house twenty, uh, would that require more staffing or is that?
I think, I think that that staffing line, I mean, we'll learn things when we're in there, but I think that we'll be able to operate. Um, with a full jail with that number of staffing.
Okay. A full jail with that number of staffing, that's great. Okay, thank you.
And that's, we we designed it with as much economy of staffing as we could, uh, the way we do it.
Yeah, okay.
Now, who knows what we'll learn, but I I think I, I I think I'm on track there. Well, I toured the Lawrence County Jail last spring. And they're gonna have, I think, something like a hundred and seventy-five bed jail. I don't know how they're doing it. They're talking about doing it with two and three jailers. And I don't know how they're doing it, but I hope he's right.
Deputize a couple inmates, yeah.
They actually have um, almost a jail within the jail for their short-term holds during the rally. We've got a similar plan for our 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 people that really are gonna stay longer than intake would hold, but yet not go into population. But we've just got a small, small area that that will classify them into there. They've got seventy-five beds just for that. I hope that they're right about that, but I think that we can run it with three, three jailers on a shift. Hey.
Other questions?
Okay, then the uh, the sheriff's office, uh, again, um, salaries, I mean, I guess staff of twenty between the two to two budgets and. Salaries is a big part of my budget, it always is. Um, so we've already talked about that. I've got um. Um, actually a decrease in the training and special equipment line, but not a huge decrease. We increased that. A year ago because we were um, we're adding uh, tasers and uh, this year we're. The taser's the lease, and so that's gonna be there every year for five years and it's a lot more economical than when we flat out buy them. But uh, so we have a seven thousand dollar annual cost with the tasers, but we also applied for highway safety grant to replace our radar units. And uh, what we have for in our patrol cars is antiquated hand-me-down highway patrol radars and they don't work very well. Some of them don't work. Individual deputies know how to make them work and then somebody else jumps in their car and don't realize you have to tap on it just like so to get it going, so. It's time for some new stuff and and so we applied for highway safety grant to replace all of them. Uh, we wouldn't be able to get enough grant money, so. Um, we haven't been approved yet, but we applied for enough uh, to get a matching grant of eighty percent toward four radar units. And then we'll look at doing it again the next year and get get them all replaced. So I've got that at seventeen thousand dollars. It's down from twenty thousand because of uh. Actually, besides the radar, there was another, another need in there that's escaping me at the moment that I had in my twenty-twenty-three, uh, twenty-twenty-four budget.
What was the uh, what was the big expense in twenty-twenty-one? So it was a one-thirty-nine?
In twenty-twenty-one? Um, was that the year I think we got new uh, computers in our patrol cars?
Ah, okay.
And so we try to, try to space these things out. The one, and and I could be wrong cuz it was either the, the year we got the computers and patrol cars or that was the year we got new. Patrol car cameras and body cameras.
Ah.
We did those in one year than the next. Now I remember if which was in twenty-twenty-one. I could find out for you though, but that's, it was one of those two items. Um. I have a, I have in my furniture and equipment line, uh, that at uh, ten thousand, I, I hope to buy a new copier. In the new building. I'm not sure yet if we can. We can put that under FFNE. Um. So right now, we have, it's a hand-me-down. It was either from the auditor or state's attorney. That's what we've always done. I haven't bought a copier in years. I've always. Always take whatever office is getting rid of one and and make it last a little longer. And we've got one that's um, that's getting on in years. And uh, I haven't replaced it cuz I'll, I'll put a new one in the new building. So I'll either lease one or if we can buy it under FFNE. If that's uh, at, you know, okay, we'll do that, but I put the money in there to lease one if necessary and then, and then hit some of the usual needs we have. On patrol cars, it's been just um. It's been been just a roller coaster uh, with our plans for replacing roll car, patrol cars. If you remember. We developed a a plan of budgeting for one and a half cars a year. One year we placed one, the next year we placed two. It hasn't worked yet because uh, we ordered uh, two patrol cars one year, one patrol car one year, then we ordered two for the next year and none of them came. That was in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two, we were supposed to get, no, we're supposed to get one in twenty-twenty-two and two in twenty-twenty-three. And uh, it's taken until about a few weeks ago to get those cars that we ordered in twenty-twenty-two. We finally got the last one here. It's waiting to have equipment installed into it, um, so it's sitting in the garage now. Hopefully in September, we'll have that. That's how long out, now we're out to get the installation work. So we should have our cars on track. Um, this year was supposed to be a one-car year. We didn't buy a car this year. Because we looked at savings last year, you you're hoping we could find somebody. Took the car out this year, so I'm gonna. Hopefully that 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 some of the other funds will not get hit too hard and cuz I'll probably run over on that line this year because we bought a car this year. That we ordered in twenty-twenty-two and it was paid for out of twenty-twenty-four funds and I only had half a car budgeted for this year, so. That means I don't have the half a car for next year, but I'm down for one car next year. Uh, the intention is to replace one car next year and hopefully get back on track with this. So I budgeted for one and a half cars for twenty-twenty-five and then, and then we'll buy one, is my intention. That makes sense. So, it was a good plan. It just hasn't worked because of this issues with the post-COVID supply issues, board cancelling our. Canceling our contract. Um, in fact, the Dodge that we did order eventually, I don't know if you guys remember, it got damaged on its way here in a tomato and. And then they sent it back to the factory, then the factory just decided, well, we're just not gonna build that car after all. And they eventually gave us a twenty. Twenty-four at the bit agreed-upon price that we got in twenty-twenty-two for twenty-twenty-three, so. You know, hopefully someday we'll have our fleet up and running, so. Um, that's, that's about all. I don't have really any of the other lines to really um, to discuss too much, uh, because there's insignificant changes, if any.
You know, if you have any question about any of those. So do you need a copier before you move into the new building?
No, no.
Carrie's getting a new one, right?
Next year. I put it off this year. It was really on our replacement schedule. It should have been done this year, but when we were cutting budgets. That was where I could cut, so.
If it's functional, we'll talk.
No, it has no issues, um.
I think the one we have was one Alexis was getting rid of cuz she wanted color. And so this one's black only. It groans when it's printing. I can hear it from my office, but it prints and it works and so um. It literally makes groaning sounds and um, so yeah, we can sure talk about that.
Ours has some little quirks. I mean, it it doesn't always do the hole punches like it's supposed to, but I mean, if that's not something that you use a lot of. Things like that.
Collating, we do copying. I would like color.
It is color.
I've never been willing to spend for, spend the money for it.
Till we get in the new building.
I get in the new building. If we're buying a new one, I would probably pursue color, right? But uh, yeah, uh, instead of buying a new one, if yours is, would work for me, I'd sure consider that. We'll see what kind of shape it's in when that day comes.
Sorry. Only questions I give?
Thank you. Rhonda.
Morning.
Good morning.
Yes, mine's pretty straightforward. I don't have anything like that. My big expense is. Mail.
Which mostly gets reimbursed.
Absolutely, absolutely. Like even, I just wrote the numbers down, so I could brag maybe a little bit. I mean, we're already. Thirteen thousand dollars, almost fourteen thousand dollars ahead of what we've spent, so. Yeah, so I like that. Um, I've made no real changes, uh, just upped a couple of lines due to just like Lane said. The increase in cost, you know, things are just costing more. Um, you know, payroll, of course, but you know, we've already talked about that. Um. Up. My equipment, planning on, you know, a new computer at some point in time, so. Other than that, I've had, I've made no changes, so. Do you guys have any questions for me?
No question.
No question.
Awesome. Thanks, Rhonda.
All right, you bet. Thank you.
Love straightforward.
Uh, she's on Zoom.
Linnea?
Sure she's coming down.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she's coming.
All right.
Been a little slow, but I'm coming up. Alrighty. Okay, so um, first one, salary, same story as everyone else. Um, talked about that in the budget. Carrie provided you the last time. I think the only real changes in there is um, brought myself up to department head. Melissa is looking at GIS training here starting in September, so I brought her up to GIS wages. And then Chris, of course, will hopefully be CAA by next year, certified assessor praiser, so um, those changes are all reflected in that salary. I made a lot of changes to where stuff is. As you can see, everything's kinda jumping around, um. I moved all of my monthly stuff to utilities, so if it's a re- reoccurring bill, it's in utilities now. Uh, moved my mailing to professional services and fees, et cetera. Um, when I was looking it over, I think the two that I'd um. Noticed are actually increasing are our beacon pictometry line. That one, um, we're seeing an eight percent increase basically in software charges within the beacon. And then um, with our new flyover next year, that decreased by about thirty dollars, but um, I was trying to make sure that the budget captured the. Full amount of the flyover. I had Rhonda run a port, a report for me on how much comes back from the beacon and pictometry and subscriber fees and then. Um, we also, of course, have those partners in pictometry. And so at, to date, from January one to date, we've already had twenty thousand dollars. Come back in um, due to beacon and pictometry. Um, so looking at it going from thirty to forty thousand is a little scary, but I think it should. Capture the full cost of it, even though we have those partners that help offset the cost. I still think my budget should reflect the full cost of the flyover. Um, so that one looks a little scary, but it is offset. Um, in what we bring in from subscriber fees. We've had good response to our monthly and quarterly beacon. We already have, I think, four or five. Monthly that have jumped on board once we offered that, so I thank you guys for approving that. Um. The other one that I wanted to draw your attention to is traveling conference. Um, that's the other one that pretty much had a straight increase. Um, I wanna know where Lane's getting a hundred and seven dollar hotel rooms cuz most of ours are in the hundred and thirty, hundred and forty range for our room blocks. Um, the other thing worth noting is because our office staff are also new, we are in the stage where we are required to go to everything. Um, it has been, I believe, since. Twenty-eighteen or nineteen that we have had three people go to conference, three people go to school, person go to U.S.P.A. So that we're anticipating, you know, full training loads now, um, just because that's what we're required to do in our first five years of. CAA and we are all within those first five years. Um, so those all increased our I double A.O. classes that we're required to take took a hundred dollar increase per class. And then our SDAO ones were fifty dollars per class, so just class, class rates are going up, travel rates are going up. And then the other thing that's worth noting is that they've changed workshop requirements. It is no longer three workshops. It is twelve hours of continuing ed credits. So rather than having, you know, three free sponsored by the state workshops. We are now required to make sure that we all have twelve hours of continuing ed credits, which can run upwards of forty dollars per credit hour. Um, so the state's been good about trying to find other ways and cheaper options. Melissa was able to go to a floodplain one put on by. The Office of Emergency Management that was actually free for registration, but you still have your hotel and. Gas and mileage and all that, meals, that kind of thing. Um, so I did increase in there just to make sure that we have room in our budget for those continuing. Ed hours um, versus the workshops that were formerly required. Um, those are the ones that I wanted to highlight. Do you guys have any questions about anything else in there?
So your reorganization of um, of classifications and things, does that align with how other offices are doing it? I I like consistency if we can have it across the the budget process, but I don't know if that's, is this a step towards that or?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, good.
We discussed in, in our department head meeting recently that um. You know, sometimes things could fall into different categories, for example, um. Postage. We use qualified pre-sourced service to do our postage and so. Really, that could, could be considered a, a professional service and a fee. But if you're strictly looking at the dollar amount of the postage, that could be a supply. You're, you know, if you're essentially paying for stamps or, you know, their, their metering stamp on the postage. So there are things that could fit into two different categories. Um, you know, they could be. Struggling to think of examples, but for the most part, I think we're all pretty much doing it the same way.
So everybody's treating postage as.
I mean, there's a little room for interpretation and, you know, historically, department heads have come into the office and. Moved things around in their budget as. As they need to to make it make sense to them. The state auditors have never had an issue with it. As long as we're following the general structure. That they lay out for us at the state level, we're fine, so I think we're good.
Yeah, mostly I tried to move um, those last three line items should be sort of your one-time fees with the exception of our gas. For when we're going out and review, which have noticed a slight uptick because we are doing our review area in the north part of the county, but it hasn't been. Incredibly significant, so, yeah. Any other questions?
And your salaries reflecting other department heads?
Yes.
Uh, where, so I'm curious about that, the offset on like the pictometry one. So where's that show up in the uh, revenue side?
It's chosen um, in revenue. I don't have, I don't have my sheet, but um, I think we do have a line for. Pictometry in there somewhere. I can get back to you on that.
I believe it's um, it falls under beacon. Everything is like sale of beacon services, but it's called pictometry. You know.
And do you know, is it about half, about half offset, something like that?
Uh, two-thirds. For pictometry. For beacon, that's just subscription, but for pictometry, it is two-thirds.
Thank you.
Yep, and then two kind of other small office updates in. Yep, and then two kind of other small office updates in general. Melissa received her CAA certification. Um, Kerry has a nice letter from the Secretary of Revenue that we wanted to share with you all, so congrats to Melissa on that, exciting. Um, and then I had a. Can't remember it, so when I think of it, I'll let you know. But thank you.
Looks good. Drew. Of Lynch tract two A. That's on Burbank Road.
It's actually on Highway fifty.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Oh, their address though is Burbank, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's right out there by, uh.
Right.
Light Hills.
Yep.
Yeah, they're squaring off the bottom part of the lot. Lot to come in after this for the reason. Get that last little bit.
Yeah, the only thing I noticed was that, um, the, um, description of user intent wasn't filled in.
Yeah, uh, sure, uh. I think the guy's buying it, he's does. Yeah.
And it's going to be his. Port-a-potty business. Will be headquartered there, at least storage there.
Okay.
And he needs that little extra land to accommodate storage. We've done that, we've been through it at, uh, planning and zoning and, and everything looked good to me there at least.
Questions?
Move to approve the plat.
Second.
Some motion. And a second to approve the plat. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And special event permit discussion.
Uh. I pulled a couple of different ones from different counties, Need County, uh, I've got a Hanson County one. They all kind of. Aren't great. And I'm trying to find a criteria that limits when these, when the permit coverage would be required, cuz a lot of the other ones are just. Everything, anybody, and I don't think. It's very like Need County. They're worried about like tattoo artists. They've got like whole sections in there about the tattoo artist. Not even vaguely relevant to what we're, what I think we're concerned about. So I came up with criteria, um. And just tossing out here. Just spitballing. Uh, more than four hours. More than five hundred people. And, uh, the activities are planned between, uh, four P.M. and nine A.M. So then we're not getting auctions, we're not getting like the, the big funerals, um, things like that. Or like, uh, the events out at the Clay County Park or Spirit Mound. I don't think we. See any of that. That's kind of the four criteria I came up with and see what you guys thought on that.
So, so a permit would apply if, if the event lasted more than four hours. And, or is it an or?
I, I don't know, I don't know yet. I, I don't know yet, um, it could be an and/or. I'm not sure if we're like, if two of the three criteria are met. Something like that, um, that's kind of what I'm thinking about.
Okay, and then the, the permit structure, so what sort of information are you gonna, gonna be collecting and then what sort of fee structure are you thinking about?
Fee structure, I tossed out five thousand and I think universally, everybody said that's too much. Uh. I'm very open to whatever suggestions the board has on that.
I mean, I think that my, my mind on the, on the fee side of it would primarily be, uh, so you're the one who's gonna be reviewing these. And then there would be the expectation that might, we might possibly. Be some burden maybe on emergency management or, uh, or, or, you know, like. There might be additional risk, I guess, to like the sheriff's department might have to be involved or something like that, so I guess. Primarily it would be how much time in your office is devoted to processing one of these permits and making sure it seems okay. And then is there an additional cost or risk, so like a portion of a potential cost or something that we should have in there too, and that, that seems like, sure. Um, cuz, cuz I don't feel like we're trying to discourage anything, so it seems like just, uh, try to, try to kind of figure what that might be. I don't know if that's.
Yeah.
Fifty dollars or, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
I wonder if, uh, you know, the presence of alcohol, I mean, it seems to me that that increases the risk enormously.
Yeah.
So I, 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 I think wanna, maybe one of the criteria.
I have that on, yeah, uh. Yeah, well, you know, booze be served, you know, booze versus just beer or something, uh. I don't know if we wanna make that distinction or not.
I'm gonna just say alcohol.
Alcohol in general.
Cause man, some people can drink a lot of beer fast.
So yeah, I mean, if, if booze is gonna be served, then that'd be one of the and. Ones, uh. Other than that.
Good work. Do we exempt nonprofits? Should we exempt nonprofits?
I think we should.
And is that a?
I can name.
Cuz that would, that would, we wouldn't have to worry about the five hundred people or four hundred people, whatever, or the hours or.
Yeah.
I think Hanson County does that as well, or maybe National Guard.
Yeah, they got some for the National Guard in there.
Talks about also like, uh, education.
My, my comment was, is just gonna be not necessarily for the alcohol and not necessarily served, but maybe allowed. Because if it's a lot, if they're not selling it, but they're allowing coolers to come in.
Yeah.
You, you've got the potential for many more minors that way than.
Yep.
Serving, so.
And then we're gonna need to require a parking plan, right?
Yes, oh, yeah, yep, that's. Yeah, I got kind of what Jose and I were saying, so. That's, yeah, that's, that's, I can bring that up. And that's, that gives me somewhere to work with, cuz that's kind of a standstill, good.
Great, it's coming along.
Yeah.
Thanks, Drew.
And then, I mean, I guess one thing too would be that, um, so we're gonna ask people to. Do a little trouble here and, and fill out this permit or stop by the office and pay us a little bit of money for the permit, so. We also might wanna think about what happens if there is an event and the sheriff show up and they're like, oh, this is, so we, we may need something. We may need an ordinance or something like that that says that you, you must have one of these, and if not, then. Five hundred dollar fine or something like that applies, but. So we think about that too, just something, cuz, cuz that is one thing we wanna discourage, so.
And I anticipate this isn't just the permit that I sign off on, or cuz it's not his only thing at all anyway. Yours Kerry's office or two, uh, commissioners.
We, we would have to, just like the fireworks permit.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks so much, Drew, good work.
Alright. Um, vouchers, um.
Move to approve.
Second.
Some motion and a second to approve vouchers, any discussion? Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And is there a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-five provisional budget?
Have we heard from everybody?
Um, we have not heard from everybody yet, but we do have until the end of September to make changes. This is kind of just the adoption of, of the framework that we have right now to work with.
Move to adopt the provisional budget.
A second.
Some motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, whip contract.
Can we do an executive session for?
Yep.
That sounds good.
Let's do that.
Questions, yeah.
Um, let's see. Department monthly reports review, Clay County Park discussion.
Uh, nothing new.
Building project?
Nothing new.
I guess I'll throw one thing out there, um, the, the rodeo grounds, uh, ended up losing quite a bit of sand, uh, with the heavy rain events in. Early June, and, uh, so the highway department provided, um. Of sand to the rodeo grounds. I believe, I haven't followed, I've made sure it worked out, but I, I connected the, uh, rodeo folks with Rod. And my understanding is that people are keeping invoices and then the park board is paying, uh, paying the cost for all of that, so.
So joint jurisdiction? Sounds like.
Changes.
Okay. Um, and one thing I wanted to ask if, uh, we could just. Uh, add to future agendas, other commissioner reports, because most of us go to meetings and. You know, every once in a while, there'll be something that I think would be really interesting, but it's not really a whole agenda item, but. You know, what's going on at C-Cog or, um, you know, any of the other organizations.
Yep, that's a good idea.
Would be a nice, a, a nice addition, um, so that, uh, I know everybody's assigned and I know Dave Teasy especially, he's got. A lot of, uh, board assignments, um, and, uh, it'd be good to. Yeah, I can have that on the bottom. Yeah, that'd be great, that'd be great. Okay, then, um, executive session.
Or also have an important negotiation, contract and employee negotiation.
Alright, for contract and employee.
I moved to go into executive session for contract and employee.
Second.
There was a motion and a second, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to come out of the executive session, second.
Some motion and a second to come out of executive session, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the WIC contract?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other business to come before us?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You're adjourned, thank you.